...
Dear our Father, watch over this council as they make decisions for Maryville and the surrounding area. Watch over our maintenance staff, watch over our clerical staff, watch over our police departments as they do their duties for this town. Also, watch over these people that have come to the meeting as they travel home and have everybody home safely. In your name we pray, oh yeah.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please say it.
Yes, right back to you. Jamie Cramrose, we're gonna wait and get him back up here at a later date. And Melanie Smith, we're gonna take her off as the assistant, and she's gonna be the secretary of our car for the 20-hour train, keep her up on the post and stuff like that.
So that's gonna leave Mr. Foster or Mr. Moore, correct?
And so far, Miss Karen Adams has not showed up, and we've made this going to take her off the list completely.
Okay, that's unbelievable, Bill. Right back.
Are we taking Melanie off of the agenda for tonight?
Uh, yeah.
Just double check.
Okay. Out of number four, I have a little add-on to that. The Senate resolution adds speed limit signs to Division Street, and I think that's 30 miles per hour. And I talked to the chief today to let him know how many signs would be put up there, and he said there's also some missing throughout town that we need to address, so we'll take care of that. Number five, Mr. Carl Blackman, we'll discuss that later on. Number six, public participation. Number seven, turn meeting. Okay? I made a motion now for approval of the minutes.
You're gonna make the motion to make the change.
Make the motion to make the change. Do I have a motion for that?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
In favor? No, thank you. Approval of the minutes is presented for special call meeting on January 2, 2018, and regular scheduled meeting on January 8, 2018. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all the names. Okay. Approval of the financial statement compared to actual versus budget for January of 2018. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Second?
Second, sir.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Under Mayor's comments, we have two kids here at Methodist Church, February the 21st, at 4:30 on Fraser Street, for kids. This is an excellent program. Our high school basketball, girls and boys, will be in playoffs for the basketball season. Regular season being over with, the boys' part and the girls' season already over. The girls have a play, they gotta bye till the 19th, they have their first playoff game. I hope, I think that's gonna be here, it's early, isn't it? Is that right, Steve?
Probably Thursday night here. It's gonna be Thursday night here. No, Monday night, sorry.
That's what I thought, Monday night.
Yeah, Monday night here.
Yeah, 19th.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Monday night, this is their first playoff game here. Our office here has been closed February 13th and February 19th. My girl tomorrow and Christmas Day Monday. Backpack program for the kids at Maryville High School, sponsored by the Methodist Church and the community, is continuing to be a great success. They're up to now to seven backpacks, and I'm sure it's gonna continue on, and I think the hard work is for their effort on this. Our 4-H members was here one morning last week. They're selling strawberries, $25 a flat. Phone number is 396-8349 if you'd like to purchase strawberries, and I think that's gonna be in March, is that correct, when they come in?
It'll be delivered by the end of March.
We'll put notice out for that. And I think that's all I have under all business, Mayor's comments. Under all business, we have a BIF for Crown Victoria car here, and we only have one BIF, and I'm fixing to see what this BIF is for that car. And William Ray, 570 Walker Street, Maryville, Louisiana, $720. William Ray, 570 Walker Street, $720. Okay? All in favor of that? All right, I get a motion for that?
Motion made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't be about $700.
Now we can live under you business.
Wouldn't be about $700.
Out of number one, this police personnel, first one we're gonna do is Mr. Josh Foster. I'm gonna turn this over to the chief.
As you know, we had let mail go. We looked around and finally got somebody who knows what's going on around here, and he's gonna make a good asset in Maryville and the town of Police Department. And I'm gonna turn this over to him. He can explain to you who he is, what he's doing, and where he's from.
I'm Josh Foster. I've been in law enforcement 11 years. For the past three years, almost three years, I was assistant chief of New Lano. I was a firefighter before that for 10 years with the city of Leesville. Separated from New Lano, chief come to me and said he had some things he wanted to take care of, asked me if I'd be willing to do it. I accepted, and we've been working on it ever since. So hopefully it'll turn out to be a good thing for the community and the department as a whole can grow and get better, so that's what we're hoping for anyway. So that's a little bit about me.
What ideas do you have?
Ma'am?
What ideas do you have?
Well, the first thing we worked on was our evidence procedures, how we collect, store, and log evidence. The second thing I noticed was we needed an up-to-date policies and procedures. I worked on that, it's a little over 400 pages, that's what we gave to the council tonight. We're gonna try to get some of these narcotics off of these streets. It's, you get out there, it's pretty bad, so we're gonna try to take some of that out and see what we can do with that. For the most part, the community seems like it's full of good people, so if we can weed out the bad ones, it'll be even better, so.
Okay, so where do you see yourself in this position in five years?
In the same position.
No luck?
But, but, but...
No...
As far as doing better, hopefully the department can grow, the town can grow, and it's just a better deal in five years, all around. So that's the ultimate goal, is progressing the town as well as the department.
And I believe you told me you live in Drutter, is that correct?
Yes, I live in Drutter. I've been there my whole life.
Okay.
I see you have experience with LA crash, LA drive, and more, so now it's...
Yes, ma'am.
Looks good.
I've been in New Lano, we didn't have none of that until I took over and installed it and went to school to learn how to operate it, so we're trying to get all that set up here now.
And there is resources with Sheriff's Office, I don't think it was Paulson, or Mr. Robert knows that, but I think all of y'all need to be aware of it, and if y'all need some little training on it, we should probably know what I'm talking about, NCIC and stuff like that.
We actually don't have NCIC here.
Well, y'all do have a, y'all have a OR, I don't know what it was.
Do we?
Yes, you do.
I'll have to give the Sheriff's Office on that and find out then.
I'll be there Wednesday, if you wanna come over there and talk to them about it, show you all the, got the paperwork every day.
Okay. Because that'd be good for us to do our background checks. I still have some that I noticed over there haven't had yet, so.
Background checks, like that. Talk to Mr. Robert a little bit about Thinkstring, I'm sure you're familiar with Thinkstring.
Yes, ma'am.
That might be something y'all could get access to also.
Well, that would be helpful.
We can talk about it.
We already went out with Mark Herford and Jared Morton and the sheriff and the chief told, and discussed a bunch of training and stuff, and things we needed to do, so we're working on that already.
For those, for those of y'all here that don't know, I'm Mr. Foster, and he has gone through our code book essay, and we are in the process of updating, updating things, and they talked to the recommendations. I keep the keeping, I keep the code book updated today.
I make a motion that we accept Josh Foster.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more here, Mr. Jamie, and I turn that over to the chief.
And introduce yourself. I just got him on board too, and he is post-certified too.
How you doing? I'm Jamie Moore, retired, 23 years military. I got 2 and 1/2 years of being in law enforcement. I'm here to protect and serve, serving for the community.
So you'll just be on the reserve?
Yes, if we lose one of our full-time employees for some reason, if he wants it, he can step right on up, he don't have to go to the cap or anything else, he's ready to go.
He was also a model of service in New Lano since he started, so.
Yes.
I know a little bit about it, he's a good officer.
I was military.
I see you're post-certified, you got CPR. Do you have antoxilizer yet?
I didn't have antoxilizer before we shut down.
Where you live at, sir?
I live out of Leesville.
Okay. Any other questions, is that my motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, number two, under new business is a resolution to the Bullard Parish Police Jury requesting assistance in the parish hot-holes on Skinner Street for the end of the town limits on Skinner Street. I'd like to say that I think some of this has already been done, and I appreciate all the help we get from the police jury, and I ask for a motion for this.
Motion.
Again, all in favor?
Aye.
David, can I ask where is Skinner Street located, please?
Let me get this straight here. Go up here on 190, the first street to the left.
Okay.
If your head is north.
Okay, I got you.
Is that right?
Yes. First street to the left past the flashing light.
Yeah, go back, just like your head, Drutter. First street on the left, that's Skinner Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We've done that, number two, we did that, we had a motion, all that took care of it. Okay, out of number three, a resolution to the police jury requesting assistance with grading tram road, Division Street, Arthur Road, and the road going into the sewer plant. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, we're going out of number four, discussion of Division Street drainage and surfacing, and identity to the resolution adds speed limit signs to Division Street. Mr. Reinhardt has an excellent plan for this, I'll let him discuss that with you.
Okay, I'd like to, the council, and the mayor's already okay, I'd like the councils to give me permission, or so that I realize in the know, I'd like to meet Karen from the parish, and let us see what kind of surfacing we can put on there after we grant it, and also to take care of the shoulders around those holes. When you fill the holes in, we need to take care of the shoulders, the water, because of the embankment on the side, just stands there, and then for the stops, or for the speed limit signs and everything, basically, it's four-wheelers and four-wheel drive pickups and everything, they use it as a playground every time we get a rain. And so all they do is keep tearing up, keep digging up on the sides and everything, keep knocking up what we put in. So I would like to, I wanna work on the drainage, and then especially in those holes, putting some kind of material in everything until we can, at some date possibly, go further than that. But I know people talk about grants and stuff like that, and paving and stuff, since January of last year, most grants and everything like that are gone. They're, the budget, federal budget and state budget, they were cut in half and everything, and all these budgets are just tied up, and their only thing they're letting out is they're letting out the water, and they're letting out the sewer because of health reasons. So we need to go ahead and now and do something temporary that stays, the best we can to keep all that water off there. About it.
Okay, I have a motion for the question. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all very much. Number five, Mr. Carl Blackman, and I know probably some of you in here know who I'm talking about. We're in a process, he's working with us, we're working with him. He's in the second team business. This is something that I just want to bring before the council, let them think about it for our next meeting we have. Like I said, permits have been approved, it's been put in the paper. He has a 3,000-gallon capacity tank on his truck that he uses for that. What he's asked us to do, and I don't have a problem with it, is to dump raw sewage into our sewer system. Of course, there's a procedure going about doing all that, and we've worked through that with it, and, and I know what the cost is for Drutter, I'm not gonna get into that tonight, the charges off of that, but I'd like the council to consider an amount of fee that we charge him, maybe something like on a monthly fee to dump, use our sewer plant for his job that he has for getting rid of raw sewage. Any questions?
No, no questions. It, it, it will take some research.
Well, it's, the research has not been done yet. What the final, we just wait right now on the final permit and set a fee for it, for a monthly charge for that. It's a go, but it's probably maybe a month out, but next meeting, y'all will probably come up with an amount you'd like to have for a fee for him to dispose of it.
My question, is there any kind of health insurance, is somebody doing that?
It's done in Drutter, other cities already does it. He'll have a container that he will dump into to keep the solids from getting into a racetrack, and, and he'll be monitoring that, or is it, he uses it, he takes it out because we don't want solids get into a racetrack.
Right, yeah.
For our sewer plant. So he'll be monitored, you know, for his procedure, but just Mr. Danny Reynolds, he's the work director in Drutter, I've talked to him about it, they have a fee they charge him, but the city of Drutter charges their customers that in that type of business for that. But this is gonna be a small deal for Mr. Blackman. I think he has, he no longer worked at Plant and Lake Hall, so this is gonna be his type of business. So it is gonna be a small revenue for the town, so just need the board to come up with an amount to charge him per month for this fee, for what he's gonna propose to do. But we do that next month. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number six, we're down to do public participation now, and I know, go ahead. What are you?
Mayor, council members, I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Jerry Lindu. I work with Congressman Mike Johnson. Congressman Johnson was elected in January of last, about November of last year, started in January. He is located in Bossier City, Benton is his home. The fourth congressional district has 15 parishes. It's kind of shaped like a C, so it goes outside Monroe, it's Union Parish, Webster, goes all the way down to the, across the top of the Arkansas border, along the Texas line, until you get to Borogard, then we turn into Allen, Evangeline, and St. Landry. I live in Borogard Parish, I've known the congressman for 15 years, so I work Borogard, Allen, Evangeline, and St. Landry parishes for him. There are over 760,000 people that he represents, and it's a very large area. There's a big difference, the diversity of our district is significant, there's a big difference between, say, Bossier and Willclaw. A lot of different cultural differences and economic needs that each of our communities have. So I wanted to give you our list of services, as well as my business card. As you know, that the council passed a resolution in December, I believe, to look at the issue with this, we call it the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's guidelines for the setting river authority, and how water is allowed to be let out, and looking at their parameters. That resolution is with our legislative group right now in DC, they're evaluating all of the things that have gone on in the past, and, and they're looking at that right now, so they have received it. Other things that the congressman's office can do, coordinate the service academy nomination process for our district. We also have things like our contest and those types of things, but what we really can help you with is writing letters of support for grants. We are not a source of grants, we are not a broker, where we can't tell you what kind of grants are out there, but if you have security grant and you are applying for it, we can write letters of support for that. So we do that routinely. I know, I have worked with the Water District there injunction, trying to assist them, making connections with USDA, and being there to observe and to gather information for the congressman. We do have someone in the Bossier area who helps us with grants, things of that nature. More importantly, the congressional office, one of our goals is for us to assist your constituents with problems they're having with federal agencies. So we do casework, and it's only federal agencies, but, you know, we're talking about immigration services, VA, social security, offensive benefits, civil service things. We, it has to be a claim has already been made, and a person's already exhausted their ability to resolve the problem, and then the congressman can make an inquiry on their behalf, and sometimes that just kind of gives a little nudge in the right direction so that we can assist the constituent in getting fast answers to their concerns. So if you have people who need those kind of health services, my card is on there, and you can reach me, and I can coordinate with them. The congressman, he's a Republican, a little bit about his past, if you don't mind, just a little bit, so you can appreciate who he really is. He is, his dad was a firefighter in Bossier. His dad has burned over 80% of his body in an industrial accident and survived, and Congressman Johnson helped care for him during those, when he was in junior middle school and high school. He went on to LSU Law School, where he has a degree in law, went to LSU Law School. He's a constitutional attorney, and so for the past 20 years, he defended churches and organizations and individuals for First Amendment rights, so religious freedom. Recently, he co-authored an article with the Attorney General to outline students' rights to express their religious beliefs in that environment. But Congressman Johnson's a father of four, he's 46-years-old, his youngest is eight-years-old. So he does not live in DC, he has a bed in his office, and he showers in the basement, and he is home every weekend. So he understands, he grew up very much like we did. I'm from Drutter, went to East Borogard, I'm a local girl, so I understand, and he does too, you know, the needs of communities like Maryville, and people, you know, his mom's on fixed income, these are not, these are not what you consider the insiders in Washington. So, like I said, I've known him for 15 years, and just really vouch for the man's integrity, significant integrity. So thank you so much for the time.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the research I did on this grant thing came from different agencies in the state and from the federal government. It, what I described pretty well what the situation is right now, the, any health issues such as sewer and water and everything, when the grant money was cut down, of course, those probably, those are the older health issues. They did move to the top, and then they left a little scrabble for, oh, let's say, arts or working on museums and everything, that money's pretty tight right now.
Councilman, you're very accurate in that, the budget for, we would call critical infrastructure issues is where most of the money is, but you understand that the federal money is typically funneled into the state?
Right.
So there's, there's federal grants, and then there's individual grants, so lots of organizations. I know that the firefighters, there's a, right now, there's a FEMA grant that's open for firefighter training assistance. So, you know, that if we do find out about this kind of grant, but you're right, it's very difficult to get anything outside, USDA still has...
Is any of that grant money that was there before we had the floods and everything, all over state Louisiana, as far as statewide goes, and even at the federal level, all the storms that we had in the past year, did any of that grant money that was up there, was it put down for infrastructure of stuff that they're rebuilding because of floods?
They just passed a budget Saturday that included funding for some of the flooding issues.
So we're looking at grants here in Maryville, trying to fix the sewer system, from my perspective, I'm relatively new here, but some of the people that worked on the water lines came over in the boat with Noah, and that's, you know. So now, some of that money has had to turn around and go back to communities and everything that are maybe only 10 or 15-years-old because they were wiped out by...
I would love to have you contact our person with grants, she does, she has probably eight-years' experience, and so if you don't mind, you have my contact information, you'll get in touch with me, I'll get you in touch with her, and she is more aware of the grant situation with water sewage, so we can help you with that.
I'll do it.
All right, are there any other questions I might be able to answer?
We're, we're working right now toward a grant for fishing equipment for the town. I'm working with a lady out of Plattey, yes, and I don't have her, I got her name, but I don't remember what it is right now. Those people, will they come visit with you?
I would be happy to help you as a, to get someone, if you need someone to come visit here, I can assist you and see if we can orchestrate that.
Because, what was it, your name, two years ago, we met one in Drutter? And we went down, come to the town, we went down and talked to it, and nobody ever showed up.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can always make phone calls.
I'll see you tomorrow, but I don't know what tomorrow, he was talking about.
You ain't got here yet.
That's not like my yesterday.
Tomorrow's tomorrow.
Well, if you'll, if you'll contact me, and you have a specific person that you need to see, and you have a difficulty responding, I definitely can make some phone calls on your behalf.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah, definitely can do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, public participation.
I'm David. For the 4-H strawberries that we're selling, if you need to order some and you can't find a 4-Her, contact me, and we'll get you on the list.
How much are they?
They're $25 a flat, and unfortunately, I do have to turn in the fee for the strawberries when we order. They're supposed to be in around, by the end of March.
Okay.
When's the deadline?
The 21st is the deadline.
Of this month?
Of this month.
Ms. Allen, if you'll get that information, Mr. Jeff, later on, we'll give a one call to the town.
Okay.
And let the people in town know that 4-Hers are selling strawberries, what they have to do, get them ordered, pay, all of that good stuff. You're here, Mr. Jeff?
Sure will. And I would like to thank... And I would like to thank you and Mr. Reinhardt, Mr. Allen, and Jennifer. It was sort of short notice, but we had our four-H, our elementary four-H officers here in the council room for their meeting, and they were able to talk with the mayor and some of the councilmen and Jennifer about their jobs and what it, you know, what it takes to be city official, and they got some tips from them. And of course, I have one here tonight who decided to show up, to actually see you guys in action, so thank you.
No problem.
I hope this can be a continuous thing.
Anything we do, it has to be a slow.
Yes, sir.
Give that young lady a big hand, because mine would somebody would come.
Okay, I'm waiting for someone else to speak, and Mr. Ferris, I don't even want to say something.
He's a man of few words.
That's true.
How about you, Ms. Rand, any comment?
I don't have any, no.
Okay. How about you, Dale?
Good.
I don't know about Dale.
Well, I do think the debate went good Saturday night.
Good turnout.
We had a good turnout with all the questions that was asked. There was, it was very quiet for two hours and fifteen minutes. I was shocked.
He commented on that.
Yeah, I know.
You can't even keep around the teachers quiet that long.
Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Thank all for coming out tonight. Come back next time.